Good evening, I'll call the Missoula City Council Meeting of February 25th, 2019 to order, if you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please let the record note that with the exception of Ms. Anderson, Ms. West, and Mr. Von Losberg, all council members are present. We have minutes for, oh, and Ms. West is present. We have minutes for the meeting of February 4th and February 11th. Without objection, they'll be approved. Seeing none, we will move on to our schedule of committee reports. Ms. Raybine.
Thanks. We have four committee meetings this coming Wednesday, the 27th of February. Public Safety and Health will begin at 8:45 in the morning and go till 9:55. Landis and Planning meets at 10:00 a.m. and goes till noon. Public Works Committee will meet at 12:30 and go to 1:50. Administration of Finance Committee meets from 1:55 to 2:35. All those meetings are being held right here in the council chambers at 140 West Pine Street.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Any general public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mazy Smith, and I have been volunteering at the Emergency Warming Shelter located in the Mountain Line Transfer Center that is now closed. First, I want to thank the council and the Mountain Line Center and its employees for opening the transfer center for our community members. I want to thank the council for their food donations as well, but more so, I want to thank my fellow volunteers for giving countless hours and dollars to ensuring that the warming center was a welcoming, safe, and positive place for the members of our community who needed it. Going forward, there are some crucial things we need to prioritize if we are going to prevent harm to the homeless folks in our community. First, there needs to be a centralized hub that provides needed services such as food, shelter, health, and housing services. With a centralized service center, we streamline paths of communication between health services, transportation services, and people that work directly with our homeless community members. This allows people to receive the services they need while simultaneously getting them into permanent housing. My experience at the shelter showed me that having disconnected service providers led to confusion and lack of care. There was no training for volunteers. It was difficult to coordinate communication between the Mountain Line, the Salvation Army, and folks at the shelter, which resulted in confusion for people who rely on these services to stay sheltered in this awful weather that we are all experiencing, especially this evening. The fact that such necessary services are temporary and understaffed is disappointing. We can do better, and my hope is that we will. If we are serious about addressing homelessness in our community, we need to create a space where we can provide necessary services like shelter, food, medicine, and also community. A place where staff is trained, the lines of communications are open, and we can create a place of community for people to get back on their feet. I urge the city of Missoula to expand its services to more homeless folks, to immediately reopen the warming shelter in the transfer center, and use emergency funds to run adequate weekend buses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Other general comment this evening? Ms. Romero.
Hi, my name is Letitia Romero. I just wanted also to just share my experience at the Emergency Warming Shelter that I closed out on Thursday. Definitely still thanking city council and the mayor for opening the building and providing a warm place for folks to go, I don't have anywhere else to go. I do want to say thank you to security that provided safety for people when we called, and also the engagement of us couple of police officers that took their time to talk with the folk that were there, and just to like, you know, on a personable level, getting to know them. Like, for me, that's really important to see that with our city employees, officers, to take the time to get to know, you know, people, our neighbors, whether or not they're homeless or not. But I do definitely want to ask for the city to please provide transportation currently on the weekends from the POV to the Salvation Army during the weekends because currently there isn't any, to get folks down there. And I went down to Mountain Line this morning, and I sat down with the operation managers, and they gave me, they referred me to beach transportation. And so maybe if we get a quote from them, how much it would cost. I could definitely email that information, maybe that would be like an option as far as, you know, it's still going to be cold, and there's still folks that need to get a Salvation Army after being there at the POV, that they can't stay at the POV, but they can at the Salvation Army. But yeah, that would be definitely an ask, is to pay beach transportation to shuttle folks over to the Salvation Army. Yeah, I just continue just to ask city council and the mayor to prioritize this. It's really important. These are people, they've come to like be our family, and, you know, I just think about a quote that said, "Fight poverty and not the poor." So I think it's just a system and that we need to be there for these folks regardless of, you know, whether we think they deserve to be out in the cold or not. That's not up for us to decide other than that we can do better and shall continue to try to do better for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Any other public comment this evening? Mr. Decker.
My name's Josh Decker. I've been participating in volunteer activities related to the warming center at the Mountain Line Transfer Station. That is a big thank you owed to folks here that helped establish that as a possibility. It was my understanding that that was established as a response to emergent weather in the last two weeks, the two weeks that it was open. I'm here to ask council to do something that's free. Great, right? Which is establish the cold weather metric that you're using to define emergency weather. If tonight doesn't qualify, I don't know what does. And should be easy to come to a fairly, you know, liberal definition of emergent weather that would serve to protect people. If council was to use emergent weather characteristics to keep other facilities open, I think we need to make the first step of defining that metric. What do we mean by emergent weather? How cold is cold enough so that all people need shelter? In the days that, since Thursday, that the shelter's been closed, the gap still exists. Our neighbors are still in the gap. If you have a permanent out at the Pavarello Center, you are not welcome for warming at the Pavarello Center. Today, or Sunday, the bus station was closed all day. Folks that had a permanent out at the POV were not at the bus station. They may have been at the library during the limited library hours, you know, but as a community, we did not provide them a spot to be on Sunday. And I think we could all see the emergent weather definition extending past the two weeks that it was employed at the transfer center. So please define emergent weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Other general comment this evening?
Hello, my name is Jackson Sapp. I also helped out at the Emergency Warming Center this past couple of weeks. I promised a friend to utilize those services, that I would read a note that he addressed to the city council, and I'll just read that to put it on the record. "To whom it may concern, just because some people act like jerks doesn't mean we're all bad people. I don't want to freeze to death in this weather. Most of us are trying. Some people are just down on their luck. I'm starting a job on Friday. I worked at Tiarama for five years. My house burned down, and I appreciate all your help." That's all he wanted to say. "I would also encourage city council to practice empathy on this very cold night, and imagine that you were my friend who is going back to his car tonight to sleep through this weather. Putting yourself in his shoes, I think, could help us along in this process. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. Any other general public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. My name is Andy Helsel. I also helped at the warming shelter these last few weeks. I stand here today in solidarity with my comrades who've spoken tonight, as well as multiple times over the last couple of months to city council about the need to care for all members of this community. When the press release came out that the warming shelter at the Mountain Line Transfer Center was going to be opened, Mayor Engen you said that it was the duty of the city government, the local government, to provide the best solutions for all of the city's citizens. Some of those citizens are sleeping outside tonight. Some of them slept outside last night. Not having a warm place to be during the day, a safe way to get to the Salvation Army by 10:00 p.m. is still happening for lots of folks in our community. So when we say that our responsibility is to provide for all of our citizens, we really need to mean all of them. And I know this is complicated because folks get kicked out of the Pavarello or the Salvation Army for reasons that, you know, many of us understand, violence, sometimes other behavioral issues, but those are still people. We don't define a person based on their behavior. People are people regardless. So whatever the reason that they're unhoused, whatever their behavior is in a certain setting, they still don't deserve to freeze to death. And so we need to address the needs of those people as well. I'm here to ask again, you know, that you define emergent weather because tonight it's really, really cold outside, even for me who gets to walk to my car a short distance and then drive to my home and walk inside. It's cold. But if I didn't have a place to sleep tonight, if I had to be outside for even a couple of hours, I think we would define it as emergent. I'd also ask that you do in fact provide transportation from the POV to the Salvation Army by 10:00 p.m., and that we come up with a permanent solution to keep folks warm and sheltered who are currently not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, city council. I'm Michael Workman, Word One. First off, I just want to thank you with the help of the Big City Documentary Film Festival. I'm very exhausted from working it for the past 10 days, and I'm also exhausted from public speaking, but it's very cold out, so I wanted to come here and speak in solidarity with our unhoused folk. Last night, last night at the film festival behind our office, it was about 11:30 or so, I saw one of some homeless folk named Hot Sauce, who's a friend of mine, who I've seen periodically, who's not allowed in either the Salvation Army or the POV. So I was trying to figure out what we could do with him, and he wanted to go to the emergency room, which I realized he's just going to get processed and kicked out from that. He suffers from addiction. He has a history of crimes related to addiction, and really has no way out other than through treatment, which he can't get, or can't get solid treatment. So I guess I'm adding another layer to this. Coming from a family of people who suffer from addiction, I know just how hard it is to get out of that situation without adequate help. And so this is also another ask of just trying to work with Providence Center and the other hospitals to try to bring back their addiction treatment programs, which we've lost a lot of them, especially since my dad suffered from addiction. I remember him going through those programs, and they were really, really helpful and helped him stay sober. He's no longer sober from, without those. So Hot Sauce's story is not something that is uncommon. And as much as we want to let shelter, as much as we realize that homelessness is a structural issue and won't be fixed with simply putting people in a shelter, we also realize that people who suffer from addiction and have tendencies to commit crimes because of that won't be allowed in these shelters, and that the way to help them is through robust addiction treatment programs. So I know we talked about this in our, in our meeting, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to continue that conversation too, to figure out what we all can do to bring those programs back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Work. Any other general public comment this evening? All right. Oh, yes, ma'am.
My name's Natalie Margolis. I have a bachelor's degree in sociology. I wasn't able to help out with the homeless shelter unfortunately, just because I was sick, but I just wanted to come here tonight and stand in solidarity, and also just kind of cite some of my studies in college. So once again, homelessness is not an individual issue. It's very much a social issue, and when I was in college, I studied the ways that a lot of normal people end up in situations where they become homeless. And I also just wanted to remind everyone that as time passes and as more holes are punctured in our network, our social networks, there's going to be more and more problems with this type of thing. And so the best thing that we can do is to strengthen our social networks now and put some energy into really figuring out how to support people who are homeless better. And so that may not mean, you know, like the biggest project you can possibly imagine, but it might mean some practical things that are tangible, like putting someone in charge of, of some of these programs that they've listed off, like the treatment centers and like better coordination so that we don't have these problems throughout this winter and next year. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, with that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items listed there were approved unanimously in council committees, and we save a little time on Mondays by considering them all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items allowed, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and will take comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
There are 10 items on tonight's consent agenda. Number one is to ratify claims in the amount of $227,482.07 for checks that were dated February 19th, 2019. Number two is to approve claims in the amount of $379,031.49 for checks that are dated February 26th, 2019. Number three is to adopt a resolution to the city council granting CCVIII Operating LLC Doing Businesses Charter Communications, an extension of the Cable Television Franchise Agreement with the city of Missoula, under the current terms of the agreement to provide cable television services from January 1st, 2019 through and including June 30th of 2019, unless earlier renewed by the parties. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a purchase order with Target Technologies International in the amount of $21,560 for supply and delivery of 44,000 pounds of EPDM, which is ethylene propylene. I think it's, I'm not sure how to say that. It's deaneing or dean, manomer synthetic, basically they're synthetic rubber infill granules that are used at the Bella Vista Field at Fort Missoula. Number five is to confirm the city council's appointment of Michael Kapitsky and Todd Lucian to the Local Emergency Planning Commission for terms that begin January 1st, 2019, and end on December 31st of 2020. Number six is to confirm Joshua Geisel and Kenneth Smith as police officers for the city of Missoula. Number seven is to appoint Ryan Smith, Heather McMillan, Kyle Gauthier as regular members, and Levi Thane for the alternate position in the Design Review Board, for terms that begin immediately and end on December 31st of 2020. Number eight is to approve the subdivision exemption for 6062 Lower Miller Creek Road in accordance with the Montana Code annotated, that's also known as the state law, Title 76-3-207 Sub 1 Sub B for a division made outside a plotted subdivision to member of the landowner's immediate family, and Missoula City, County, or Missoula City subdivision regulations, Article 8, Section 8-0404E2A1, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the amended conditions of approval. Number nine is to set a public hearing on March 11th, 2019, and preliminarily adopt an ordinance amending Title 1, Chapter 1.16, entitled "Election Words," revising and updating the city's ward boundaries based on new population statistics. And number 10 is super long. It's a two-parter. First is to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Missoula, Montana, providing for the sale, issuance, and delivery of the city's water system revenue bonds Series 2019B in the principal amount of not to exceed $5 million, to pay a portion of the redemption price of the city's outstanding water system revenue bond anticipation notes Series 2017A, and to pay the costs of issuing the 2019B bonds, delegating the determination of fixing the date, form, maturities, interest rates, terms, payment, and redemption provisions of the 2019 bonds, providing for the registration and authentication of the 2019B bonds, designating a registrar, providing for the collection, handling, and disposition of revenues, adopting certain funds and accounts, and providing for deposits therein, establishing certain covenants, providing for the issuance of future parity bonds, establishing certain events by default, approving the form of and authorizing the mayor, chief administrative officer, and/or the finance director to execute the offer letter, covenanting to comply with certain federal tax laws, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Part number two, I know it's hard to believe, but that was just the first part. The second part is a resolution, adopting a resolution of the city council of the city of Missoula, providing for the sale, issuance, and delivery of the city's water system revenue bonds Series 19A in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $130 million, to redeem with other available funds the city's outstanding water system revenue bond anticipation notes Series 2017A, and to pay the costs of issuing the 2019A bonds, delegating the determination of fixing the date, form, maturities, interest rates, terms, payment, and redemption provisions of the 2019A bonds, providing for the registration and authentication of the 2019A bonds, providing for the call, payment, and redemption of the city's outstanding water system revenue bond anticipation notes Series 2017A, and the city's outstanding water system revenue bond anticipation notes Series 17B, designating a registrar, providing for the collection, handling, and disposition of revenues, creating and adopting certain funds and accounts, providing for deposits therein, establishing certain covenants between the city and the registered owners, providing for the issuance of future parity bonds, establishing certain events of default, providing for continuing disclosure of information, approving the form of the bond purchase contract, and authorizing the mayor, chief administrative officer, and/or financing, finance director to execute the bond purchase contract, covenanting to comply with certain federal tax and securities laws, delegating certain actions in connection with the preliminary official statement, and the final official statement, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Thank, pardon me. Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Anyone in the audience here to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, questions or comments from council members? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to actually congratulate you and Dale for the great work that you did in giving us a higher rating for these bonds. And that's going to save the taxpayers a million bucks, so I mean, that is, that's great work, so congratulations on doing that, and thank you for your work. I've obviously been critical of the water company, but this is great news for the city that we're finally issuing the long-term debt, so we don't have additional exposure of that 100-plus million dollars of floating rate notes, where a change in interest rates could, could expose us to a lot of risk. So that, that's great news, happy to support that. And I'm hoping that we can divide the question on, and vote on item four separately, just because I think that the taxpayers of Missoula County have paid more than enough into this Fort Missoula Park without another additional $21,560. So if we could please divide the question and vote on item four separately, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Dubarry?
I wanted to thank all the folks who applied for the Design Review Board. We had a number of excellent candidates, and unfortunately, we couldn't appoint everybody, but I feel like we have a good set of folks to populate that board as they move forward in implementing the Design Excellence Project, which we approved earlier this winter. And I'd also like to thank the patience of the folks in Lower Miller Creek in that family transfer. It did take a little bit of effort with staff crafting the right language around those conditions, but we came to a good compromise around that, and we voted unanimously in committee to advance that, and I hope folks will support that this evening.
Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Raybine will have a roll call vote on items one through three and five through 10.
On that part of the consent agenda, Armstrong, Armstrong votes yes. Becerra, Becerra votes yes. Kears, Kears votes yes. Dubarry, Dubarry votes yes. Harp, Harp votes yes. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Merritt, Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Ramos votes yes. And West votes yes. Would anybody like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and two absent.
And item number four.
And on item number four, we'll start this round with Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kears, Kears votes yes. Dubarry, Dubarry votes yes. Harp, Harp votes yes. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Merritt, Merritt votes yes. Ramos, Ramos votes no. West, West votes yes. Armstrong, Armstrong votes yes. Would anybody like to change your vote? That's nine ayes, one nay, and two absent.
Thank you. And Chief Brady is here to introduce you to an officer you just confirmed.
Thank you, Mike Brady, Chief of Police. We have two new members of our department. One was not able to make it. He is traveling for a death in the family. So these two officers have completed their first year of service. They both came to Missoula PD with prior experience, and so they were able to go right into our FTO program. They've done extremely well, and they have done everything that's asked of them and more. And so Officer Josh Geisel could not be with us. He's originally from Bakersfield, California. He was a deputy with Kern County Sheriff's Department before he, where he was able to work his way up to be a canine handler. After working there for eight years, he accepted the job here in Missoula, and he moved here with his wife Laura and his son Luke, and we're, our thoughts are with him tonight as he's traveling. Officer Ken Smith was born in Kalispell. He grew up in Missoula, and he attended the University of Montana, obtaining a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration. He began his career in law enforcement working for the Missoula County Juvenile Detention Center before accepting a position as a police officer in Helena. He spent three years in Helena as a police officer before accepting the position here in Missoula and moving back to town. He's here with his wife Alicia and their children Sawyer and Amelia.
Thank you. And this is one of those rare opportunities where council gets to stand up and clap because you you did a good thing. Congratulations. Mike dismissed the officer. All right. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we will move on to comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. We do have a River Road Neighborhood Council report this evening. Mr. Schatz is here.
Thank you all. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the River Road general meeting that happened on February 13th at Garden City Harvest.
Nick, if you could tell us who you are for the record?
I'm sorry. I'm Nick Schatz from River Road Neighborhood.
Thank you.
We had right around 35 people, which is pretty good for a cold night. We heard a lot of information about the Russell Street project update, which is cool, something our neighborhood is really excited for. We learned about the Missoula Downtown Master Plan from Melinda McCarthy. We welcomed the YWCA to our neighborhood. They've been really great about communicating with us and kind of giving us information about their project, which is cool. We had some good sort of general question and answer with Michelle and Julie from city council, and we talked about snow, and we talked about leaves, and we talked about traffic. And it was cool. We did our priorities where folks got to list all the things that they thought were important to the neighborhood, and then to put little dots up to sort of rank those. I'm going to give you those in order. Sidewalks is number one. We're not sure if people want sidewalks or don't want sidewalks. So, we need to do some further research because we have a pretty divided group in our neighborhood around sidewalks, but they're an issue, one way or the other. Number two is pedestrian and bike connectivity. Number three, through-street connectivity. Number four is preservation of dark skies. Number five is trail lighting at pedestrian scale. Number six, snow removal and parking. And number seven, bus stops. So, it was a good conversation. We had a lot of folks really engaged, which is cool to see. We had great food from Montrose PAG, which is always nice. And I just personally wanted to thank Gwen Jones, Heather Harp, and Jane Kelly for putting together the local government citizens academy. It's been really great. And, you know, going to those meetings and presenting to folks is, you know, it just makes that a lot easier. So, thanks for that.
Thank you, Mr. Schatz. Excuse me. We'll move on to special presentations. We have two proclamations this evening. First, ladies and gentlemen, whereas for more than 126 years, University of Montana has been providing educational services in our city, and whereas the city of Missoula, pardon me, has benefited from the many research, teaching, and community service initiatives that make this university one of the most outstanding educational institutions in the world, and whereas one of the most important days in the university's calendar is Charter Day, an annual event celebrating the signing of the university's charter, which provides our community an opportunity to join with the university in honoring exceptional faculty, staff, students, and alumni, and whereas families, friends, neighbors, students, alumni, and faculty members, past and present, are welcome at the Charter Day celebration. Now therefore, I, John Engen, Mayor of the city of Missoula and the state of Montana, do hereby proclaim February 27th, 2019 in Missoula, Montana, as University of Montana Day. And I'll pay those folks a visit for Charter Day on Wednesday. Our second proclamation this evening is a joint proclamation between Missoula County and the city of Missoula, whereas the Meals on Wheels program at Missoula Aging Services is a valuable resource to older adults in Missoula County, and whereas more than 800 homebound elders and adults with disabilities received Meals on Wheels in the past year with nearly 107,000 meals served in Missoula County, and whereas volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of this program through their dedication to bring not only hot nutritious meals to clients, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Missoula Aging Services counts on these volunteers and the support of the community to serve the growing number of elders who need this service in order to remain in their homes, and whereas we wish to raise awareness and support for Meals on Wheels in Missoula and surrounding areas, now therefore we, the Missoula Board of County Commissioners and the mayor of the city of Missoula, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2019, as March for Meals Month in Missoula, Montana. And we invite citizens to thank the caring volunteers, recognize the value of this service to homebound elders and adults with disabilities, and encourage citizens to volunteer as Meals on Wheels drivers so elders may remain in their homes. And I know that Councilwoman Jones has something she'd like to say about this this evening?
Thank you. I have the privilege of sitting on the board for Missoula Aging Services and wanted to thank them for all of the, all that they do, first of all, and draw attention to the Meals on Wheels program, which is, just has a huge impact in Missoula, and there is an opportunity for city councilors to participate in that program on a volunteer basis later this month. So, I have the utmost respect and esteem for Missoula Aging Services, and I know that their executive director, Susan Kohler, is here, and I'd like to invite her up to just say a few words.
Ms. Kohler?
Good, excuse me, good evening. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for the work that you do for, and the support for two Missoula Aging Services and our Meals on Wheels program. It's growing substantially every year by the number of older adults that are finding themselves in a position where they can't cook any longer, but feel like they're still safe at home. And this meal does make a difference in terms of nutrition and a safety check. I want to thank you for that. I also want to point out that we have to raise over $100,000 every year in order to keep pace with this increased number of individuals, and it seems to be increasing every year. Last year was a little over 800 people that we served, and we're on track this year to serve more than that. So, we are looking also for volunteers to help drive the various routes. There's not a place in the county that we can't get to, and today's a good example of the commitment of our volunteers. They're out there, and they are driving, and we were able to deliver to everybody who is to receive a meal. In fact, in my 35 years, I don't think I've ever known a day where they haven't delivered meals. So, I'm really proud of the work that they do, and it's a good exercise in what volunteers can do into helping our community, many of themselves are older adults themselves. So, thank you, and I look forward to going home.
Thank you, Ms. Kohler. I don't blame you a bit. We will move on, ladies and gentlemen, to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following the staff report, council and I will invite community comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. Our lone public hearing this evening is on FY 18, fiscal year 18, budget amendments for the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. And Ms. Dunn is here with a staff report.
Hello, everybody. Jill Dunn with MRA, Missoula Redevelopment Agency, and I'm here to present our request for the city council to approve a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2018 budget. That amends the total Missoula Redevelopment Agency budget, including increasing revenues by $678,216 and decreasing expenditures by $439,230 in order to recognize additional revenue based on final valuations and mill levies, anticipated bond proceeds, and administrative and project-related revenue and expenditures during the fiscal year, and incorporate ongoing construction projects and bond issues with related debt service that were carried forward from fiscal year 2017. This is our wrap-up budget amendment request that we come before you every year at conclusion of our annual audit. That brings everything together. When we bring you our original budget, it is before we get our taxable values, and it is also before all of the mill levies are established. We also have projects that come to us, as you all know, during the year, and some of those projects require bonding to proceed with that project, and the bonding all comes before you. These amendments are again for fiscal year 2018, so that's as of June 30th, 2018, that fiscal year ended. There was one bond issue that you approved during that fiscal year, and that was for the North Reserve Scott Street District. That included Phase 2 and 3 for the Scott Street Village housing project. And so, that has been rolled into these, and so this is required of us to do at the end of our audit to kind of bring everything together and bring it before you. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on these budget amendments? All right. Seeing no takers, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Ms. Harp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2018 budget, that amends the total Missoula Redevelopment Agency, or MRA, budget, including increasing revenues by $678,216 and decreasing expenditures by $439,230 in order to recognize additional revenue based on final valuations and mill levies, anticipated bond proceeds, and administrative and project-related revenue and expenditures during the fiscal year, and incorporate ongoing construction projects and bond issues with related debt service that were carried forward from the fiscal year 2017. May I speak to that motion?
Ms. Harp?
I want to thank Jill Dunn of MRA. I think she does a fantastic job of presenting the facts in a very easy-to-understand way. Frankly, I think most of us, when we look at these kinds of numbers, they can go right over our heads, and she delivers a product that makes a lot of sense to the average person, and for that, I commend you. So, thank you.
That motion is in order. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay. On the resolution, Kears, Kears votes yes. Debary, Debary votes yes. Harp, Harp votes yes. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Merritt, Merritt votes yes. Ramos, Ramos votes yes. West, West votes yes. Armstrong, Armstrong votes yes. And Becerra, Becerra votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes and two absent.
Pardon me. And the resolution is approved. We have no additional public hearings. Move on to communications from the mayor. So, I wanted to speak a little bit to issues of emergency shelter. So, a couple of things are in play here. One is, as you all know, we contracted with the Pavarello Center to provide gap resources, a place for people to stay after we elected to close the emergency shelter at the Transfer Center. The Transfer Center was indeed an emergency shelter based on really rotten weather. We had to scramble to figure that one out, given, given the fact that we learned of the gap between the time the Salvation Army was open and other facilities being available. The Pavarello was exceptionally helpful in opening their doors. They, they simply cannot let some folks in who have been put on what's called permanent out. There are real reasons that people are put on permanent out, and we hope through our process and through our work with the planning committee on our tenure plan to end homelessness that we can come up with a solution for those folks, but it's really, really hard. With regard to transportation, over the course of the weekend when mountain line bus service doesn't run, our staff has been coordinating with the Pavarello Missoula Interface Collaborative and the Union Gospel Mission to arrange transportation for those times when mountain line is not providing service. That should provide us with, that should close the gap on the weekends until such time as the weather gets better. So, this is a priority for municipal government. Your staff has been spending lots of time working this out, and they spent a hell of a lot of time before it was emergent trying to figure this out. The Salvation Army came together because your staff worked for about six months to try to figure it out and coordinate with the Salvation Army, and then helped coordinate fundraising efforts. The tenure plan calls for a variety of things, and we're working on those, including what we think is a shelter situation that will allow folks who are, who are really challenging to have safe supervised housing on a permanent basis. We're two years away from that probably today, but we're working on it as fast as we can. With, with regard to addiction services, I think that's part and parcel of what we need to figure out as a community, but we don't do, we don't get to do that alone, and we'll be continuing to work with our partners, but as a, as a function of housing first, we should have more access to addiction services or at least some stopgap measures in place. There was a last point, and I'm trying to remember what it was, but I can't, so I won't. Just wanted to make sure you're all aware that this is top of mind for folks who are responsible for delivering these services. It's top of mind in my office, and frankly, it's top of mind for most of you. I talk to you on a regular basis, and many of you have stepped up to help us solve these problems. It is a big deal, and it's really challenging. Oh, the third point was, we spent a portion of our conversation last week with Pavarello, and we spent a portion of our time during a staff meeting trying to establish those cold weather standards so that they're clear and understood by all parties, so that we're not ever in a position where we're caught unawares or unprepared. All works in progress. With that, we'll move on to general comments from council members. We'll begin this evening with Ms. Merritt. Ms. Harp?
This is a huge shout-out to the U-14 and U-19 girls hockey teams. Both teams brought home the state championship and got to play here in Missoula, Montana. And it was just such an utter delight to see girls in sport excel and meet the challenge. And I think all of us, whether our hobby is just long-distance running or it's a team sport, each one of those provide an outlet for our spirits, and I keep thinking back to our Parks Department that many times that is the outlet for folks, that they have the opportunity to enjoy sport. So, congratulations to all the girls.
Ms. West, Mr. Ramos, Mr. Hess?
Mayor, thank you for providing the context surrounding the issue of warming shelter. It is incredibly challenging, and I just want to recognize the work that you and your office have done, as well as city staff, to tackle this. I am fully confident that, that this winter is better than last winter, and that next winter will be better than this winter. And we will take steps to get to the place we need to be, and those won't always move as quickly as we want them to, but we will steadily move in the right direction. And so, I want to thank you for your work on that.
Ms. Becerra?
I just wanted to thank our Public Works Streets Division. I think they're working really hard to make sure that we have safe roads. I know that they can get to everywhere where citizens would like them to be, but I have seen a lot of plows out there, and I think they're, they're doing a really good job.
Ms. Kears?
I want to talk about Big Sky Doc Fest, but I will just follow up on Ms. Becerra's comments that I've had a bunch of folks in Ward 6 follow up with me regarding street challenges, and I've been, I knew I would be satisfied, but I've been glad to be satisfied with my conversations with the Streets Department because what we have is responsive folks in those positions, and I'm really grateful for those people. But my comment about Big Sky Doc Fest is that if three weeks ago you had asked me, "Are you well acquainted with the Big Sky Documentary Film Fest?", I would say yes, quite confidently, and I learned that I was wrong. I had a relative who had a film in the Film Fest, and I'm really proud of him. those positions and I'm really grateful for those people. But my comment about Big Sky Doc Fest is that if three weeks ago, you had asked me, "Are you well acquainted with the Big Sky Documentary Film Fest?", I would say yes, quite confidently. And I learned that I was wrong. I had a relative who had a film in the Film Fest and I'm really proud of him. Good, good job, Alex. But what I learned is that our community provides a lot of value to filmmakers and filmmakers go to different sessions throughout the, the time of the Big Sky Doc Fest gaining skills and becoming better filmmakers. And that's part of the allure of after their films get accepted into the festival to come to our community with their valuable dollars and, and stay and learn. And I didn't know that previously. It's just another example of how there's all of these interesting things in our community that bring people here, show them how great we are, and then they like end up moving here. And so, it's another piece of the festival that I wanted to share because I hadn't been aware of it previously and good work to all of them.
Ms. Jones?
Thanks for the, the comments on all of the work that's gone into trying to house everyone in Missoula this, this winter. And I know a ton of work has gone into it. If we had more resources, this whole job would be a lot easier, but I think the administration is doing a really good job with, with what we have and being creative and addressing those gaps. And on a totally different topic, I just wanted to say that I had the petition, I had the chance to go see the Bobcat Grizzly basketball game this last weekend, which was really fun and the Grizzlies won. And we have some really hot basketball going on over at the university, if you guys get a chance to see it. But it was, it was an evening of really fun stuff. Not only was it great basketball and we won, which is very important, of course, but not even during the halftime, but during a timeout, one of the members of the dance team was proposed to and she said yes. So, that was very exciting. And then during the timeout, or I'm sorry, during the halftime, there was an event where a student would get $500 scholarship if he could make a half-court shot. He was unsuccessful, but then they gave President Seth Bodnar five attempts and he made it on the third or fourth attempt. So, the student actually got $1,000 scholarship. So, I feel like we should have some kind of a challenge with Bozeman and Montana State University about the presidents going up against each other with a half-court shot. I just, I don't know. I'm going to talk to, I'm going to talk to the U about that.
Ms. DeBary? Ms. Armstrong?
This is probably not going to be very popular, but it's been bothering me for a long time. We, we have had someone who has houseless pass away from, and you all may have seen the post, Billy Packard, and it was not due to non-shelter. We had emergency shelter open at the time, but I feel pretty strongly in the next couple days, we're going to hear about people passing away and freezing to death. And it's just flat bothered me and if there's a way to reallocate this, I will. It's bothered me that we're, I know the buckets are there for a reason, but when we have situations like this where people are dying, I feel strongly that we could reallocate funds where we're sending people on goodwill trips and paying $25,000 for a piece of art and maybe we could just push back the $21,000 for the, the playground infill, maybe just a little bit when we have situations like this. And I'd be very open to discussions about maybe moving some of those buckets around and seeing what we can do to, this may not be a problem that can be solved by money, but if it's a problem that can be alleviated, delayed, or helped by a little bit of money, I hope that we, you know, we say we think creatively. Well, maybe we need to think more emotionally about situations like this. And I know policies are there, but you know what? People are dying. So, I would be very open to discussions and new agenda items about moving some of those items around pretty quickly.
We have no committee reports this evening. We have a legislative update on our new business agenda. You all have received that. We continue to huddle in the morning, see what's up and deal with it accordingly. We had our League Conference Call on Friday. Your League of Cities and Towns dues are going to, they're making a difference. So, protecting our interests and the interests of cities and towns around Montana. Any questions, comments about legislature? All right, seeing none. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those. Any miscellaneous reports, communications, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none. As always, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.